...here in the auditorium. I had the pleasure of meeting Ms. Brewster, talking with her. I think that it's been a wise choice for this position. But the problem I saw at that meeting was that it was held here and I don't think it needed to be held in this building, in this room. Attendance was limited, I think, to myself from the public and five board members, committee members. And it could have been held in the administration building in that meeting room. I think it would have saved the taxpayers some money. I know there was a lot of effort in assembling the tables, putting all the computers in position and such, and none of the committee members sat there anyway. I think you're aware of that. So I would be, I would like you to consider scheduling these meetings and thinking about who's going to attend and who's not going to attend, especially in the week of Thanksgiving or Christmas or whatever it is when you have a meeting and no one's in town. The second issue is tomorrow night, there's a technology meeting and on the agenda is a presentation from Dr. Alex Stone, president of CEO of VLN Partners. I get the impression this is like the JLR presentation, which occurred a few years ago, where you brought a contractor in to give a presentation and all of a sudden they got the contract and continue to get paid for their work without vetting any other contractors, without going out for bids or even looking for anyone else. I don't know what your goal is here, but if you're after a virtual network or a virtual learning network, if you're after putting in a virtual learning network, I think you should first determine why you want to do that, what you want to accomplish, and then go learn something about a virtual learning network before you bring a contractor in who provides virtual learning networks. Because this looks like they're going to slip this guy in and he's going to get a contract to provide the service. I did some searching. I found his company's only three years old and comprised of him. Maybe there's one other person plus whoever he may hire. I found that there were a number of disgruntled anonymous employees that didn't give him a very high rating. So I think you ought to vet your choices better. I noticed that in March of next year, that there's an e-learning conference at Drexel University. I think you know where that is. And it would be advisable if you sent someone there and they attended some of the presentations. Maybe they could learn something more about e-learning and bring it back to the committee or back to the board. And then you could decide and make some kind of plan as to what you want to do. I really don't understand whether a virtual learning network would be done by Penridge or be done by a joint effort between Palisades, Quakertown, and Penridge or by the IU. In some states, it's even done by the Department of Education for the state. So I think you really need to look into it deeper, come up with some type of plan and implement the plan in writing and give the public some kind of idea of what you're after so we can join in with your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Linden. Thank you for attending the academic performance.
You're welcome.
Meeting Monday night.
Charles Healy, Bedminster. I'd like more detailed information on, before the motion is voted on, from the Personnel Committee, item four, motion to approve salary, amended salary adjustments and/or employment contracts. I thought that if an administrator signs a five-year contract, that that's the agreed upon salary. I note that Dr. Rattigan is one of the persons listed here. She just got here and I was curious as to why there would be a salary adjustment at this early stage. Also, to have this motion now at a time when the teacher's contract hasn't been negotiated, I don't know whether that is a good move, given the fact that it might be used as a precedent for negotiations with the teachers' union.
Are you ready for, I will give you an answer, Mr. Healy. This motion relates to the fact that we did settle an agreement with our Act 93 personnel, which basically are supervisors and administrators, such as principals, and that the cabinet members and the superintendent tend to fall along that same line. So these adjustments are in line with that change. I would note that our contracts are not five-year contracts. Some of them are three-year contracts, some not that long. And there are salary adjustments, not necessarily built in along the way specifically, but discussed and agreed upon by the board or not, as the case may be, each and every year. So in this case, this has to do in part with the way the monies are put into a 403B or a 457 account.
So it's not a salary increase per se?
Not per se, no.
Okay. And this would not impact on the future negotiations with the teachers' contract?
Everything impacts the teachers' negotiations. And certainly there are issues that carry over from the Act 93 agreement as well. So I can't say that it won't impact the teachers' agreement, but pretty much everything we do and everything that goes on in the world of education in the state does have impact on our teachers' and support staff agreements.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else before we start the main business of the meeting? Not, I will move to the consent count. I would like to hear a motion to approve the minutes expenditures, reports, and personnel contracts as set forth in items A through J on the agenda. I would note that in item J, there is a correction that I received this afternoon. On page two, there is a listing for a specific Erica Henry that we are omitting. This was actually an error. It was not, it's supposed to be included. So the motion should include all the items with that exception. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. And a second.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mr. Casper to approve the consent calendar. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Student liaison, Mr. Callen.
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. Thank you again, once again, for having me. I just have a few quick things. This past Tuesday, right before Thanksgiving break, Student Council held the annual harvest breakfast, and that's where students, faculty, community members can all come to a breakfast prepared by Student Council members for $6. Actually, teachers are free, but for everyone else, $6. And that money benefits our Student Council in the future work. It was a really well-attended event, and Student Council is really pushing for a greater community interaction between us and the community. We think it's a crucial part of the work we do. We're not limited to just the students. We're here to work with the community's staff, really every group that's in this community. So seeing a lot of community members attend, that was really great for us, to see for us, because it shows that our efforts are paying off in a way. One other thing I just wanted to point out, and just seeing my, Veronica, Kim, Simon cooking club, and just a few other things. One thing that I was thinking about when someone asked me, what is Penridge known for? And it's a really difficult question for me to answer, because I think there's so many different things. Penridge is known for academics, it's known for sports, it's known for the band, it's known for extracurricular clubs. I mean, the list goes on and on. And I think that's something that is really great about this district, and I think that a lot of the students really appreciate, because especially in these times with a lot of other districts limiting certain programs, both curricular and post-curricular, for this district to have a thriving with academic and extracurricular opportunities is a really great thing to see from a student perspective, and I think myself as well as many other students really appreciate that. So beyond that, that's all I have.
Thank you. For the president's report. This week, there's a rather complicated and perhaps contentious case before the Supreme Court, which actually is being argued before the U.S. Supreme Court. It has to do with free speech, but also with the issue of what can or cannot be said in posts on various social media, such as Facebook. In this case, it happens to be Facebook. And in this case, it happens to be about domestic abuse, if that's the correct term, or whether it's a free speech issue or both. And that struck me in part because I happen to be someone who pays attention to what goes on with the Supreme Court, but also because I think it has an impact here at Penridge. And when I say an impact, we have seen in the last year or less, a number of issues and incidents that relate to social media and which have created some extra effort and time on the part of our personnel and on the part of the police in this area. I would cite the incident of the bomb threat that ran through Yikgak some weeks ago. I got the call as I was trying to crawl in bed from another board member. I don't monitor Yikgak, nor do I monitor the other social media particularly. I had actually never heard of Yikgak. But as I understand, it is a fairly anonymous site, and so this individual obviously felt that that was not a bad thing to do or say on the social media. Obviously, that involved the police and so forth. We also had several other issues of this nature. One at the Vocational Technical School recently, where a student accused an employee of improper behavior. That resulted in not only an investigation by the administration, but by the Bedminster Police. Obviously, both of those take time, money, and effort. And as it turned out, the police determined that this was a false actualization. So there was nothing that presumably was accomplished at the end of this event. So I continue to be concerned. I wish I had a solution for the problem. I mean, it's always easy to cite problems and not necessarily so easy to solve them. But it is a major concern of mine, and I think it is something that we all see the impacts from. We had a, at the government, U.S. government level, we had a staff member resign this week because of disparaging remarks that were made at the annual turkey pardon of all things. That sort of thing has seemingly become more and more common. And yet, you know, there are other incidents that are real and problematic, so obviously the school district must spend time and effort on that. And I know Dr. Rattigan is one who does spend time and effort on that. I also wanted to note that this particular month, and actually, it's been more like six weeks since the last board meeting, we have had only one right-to-know request, and the amount of money spent on attorney's fees for that is $4,039.50. At this point, we'll move on to the superintendent's report, but before we do that, I will say that Dr. Rattigan is not with us, quite obviously. She had a personal emergency. She will be back, I'm sure, in the near future, but for tonight, Dr. Levar, the assistant superintendent, is stepping into her shoes. And Dr. Levar, if you would give the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. The first item listed is, just to recognize, a display of student artifacts from Central Middle School. There are, if you haven't had a chance to look at them, you need to go over to there and take a look. There are artifacts in areas of history, art, music, family, consumer science, language arts, and science. And it's a lot of great work by our students. The second item is to note a donation of a flute from Gary Schiff to Bedminster Elementary School as a note for those of us who knew Gary Schiff as a retired teacher at Bedminster and also as a volunteer there. And the flute that he's donated is a closed-hole student-level flute that will be able to be used by the students. Thank you, Dr. Yarnell.
Thank you. At this point, we'll move to committee reports. The first one of those is at the Activities Committee, and that is Mrs. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. The Activities Committee met on November 12th. Minutes are, should be online by now, but I have no motions to put before the board this evening. The next meeting is scheduled for January 14th at 7:30. Well, I don't know, it might not be 7:30. Is that still with the personnel and policy?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Anyway.
One of the three.
One of the three. January 14th. Thank you, Dr. Yarnell.
Thank you. Academic performance. The Academic Performance Committee met, as Mr. Linden pointed out, on Monday, November 24th. The sole topic that night was the student test course, and particularly, the school profile that was developed by the State Department of Education and was rolled out for the first time last year, rolled out late, I might note, and rolled out again late this year, due to inaccuracies. I believe the quote was something like 20% of the numbers were inaccurate initially and had to be corrected. That, nevertheless, that said, I want to thank Mrs. Brewster for the good job of describing a rather complicated situation. I say complicated because in addition to the standard Keystone exams that are involved and the PSSA testing that's involved, SATs and so forth, we now have the PBAS numbers. For those of you who aren't familiar with the Pennsylvania Value Assessment System, it basically is an attempt to measure progress of students from year to year. So it's a longitudinal study, and the expectation is that students make a certain amount of growth in terms of knowledge over one year. Obviously, students who exceed that drives that number upward. Those who do not accomplish that drives the number downward, regardless of whether they are special needs students, gifted students, or students who are somewhere in between. So those numbers have begun to influence the school profile. We have about three-quarters of an inch of paper regarding this, but you have the privilege, if you would like, to see those, that information for the individual schools, all of the schools, the high school, the three middle schools, and the seven elementary schools are represented. And they're on the school performance profile that's listed on the website. I think many of our schools did quite well, all did well. I certainly want to commend the high school for doing as well as they did. They did very well, especially in comparison to some of the other high schools in the area. And I think that was a particularly challenging thing to accomplish, especially in the light of the Keystone Biology exams, which turned out to be difficult for students, I believe, across the state, certainly in Penridge and other places that I'm aware of, due to the fact that rather than being content and idea-based, a lot of what was asked had to do with terminology. Not the thing that I would teach if I were to be making the choice, and I'm sure not the thing that our teachers are most interested in teaching. So obviously, those are things that, if that continues, you have to make adjustments to achieve. But that was the gist of the meeting, and as I say, the results of those data are on the website. We will have another Academic Performance Committee meeting. It is scheduled for December 8th. That would be obviously next Monday. And at that meeting, we will talk about the program improvement proposals, as we do every year, at some time during the December timeframe. Obviously, for the Academic Performance Committee, that is the start of the budget season. Those proposals are brought forth, the board looks at them, approves them, modifies them, whatever, and they are all then at the board. The full board is asked to approve them contingent upon funding once the budget is passed. So that's the next meeting. At this point, we'll go to Facilities, and that's Mr. Casper.
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. Facilities Committee met on November 10th. There are three motions on the agenda tonight. First motion is obsolete items, item one, rather, motion one, A through F.
I have a second to that motion.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sarnes. Moved by Mr. Casper, seconded by Mr. Sarnes to approve the obsolete items listed in items A through F. Comments or questions from board members? Not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Casper?
Thank you. Second motion is to approve two change orders. One for the West Rock Hill lighting upgrades and second for partial roof replacement at Siler Elementary. The West Rock Hill's change order is $39,005.4217, and the Siler Elementary credit is $27,008.70.
Thank you. Do we have a second to this motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Casper, seconded by Mr. Ragoma to approve the change orders for credits at both West Rock Hill and Siler. Comments or questions from board members? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Casper?
Thank you. Third motion is to approve an easement for Grand View, it's listed as the Grand View Hospital Easement Agreement.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Casper, seconded by Mr. Sarnes to approve the motion for an easement. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Casper?
The next Facilities Committee meeting is scheduled for December 16th, 2014.
We didn't do number two, I don't believe.
We did indeed, Mr. Healy. You must have been asleep during that.
I must have been. It must be that turkey again.
We approved it, nine zero. We are now going to move to the Finance Committee. Thank you, Mr. Casper. We'll move to the Finance Committee. Mr. Sarnes.
Bye.
All right. The Finance Committee also met on November 10th, and I have a couple of motions. The first is our usual motion to approve contracts, and the contracts listed tonight are one, A through F.
Thank you. Do we? Thank you. Do we have a second to that motion? Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Moved by Mr. Sarnes and seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to approve the contracts listed in items A through F. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Sarnes?
The second is a motion to approve settlement agreement identified as 2015-14.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Sarnes, seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to approve the settlement agreement. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Nay. Motion carries eight one. Mr. Sarnes?
The next is a motion to approve the appointment of Deputy Tax Collector for the borough of Sellersville, Susan Pap, and for Bedminster, Patricia Seaworth.
Thank you. Do we have a second to that motion? Moved by Mr. Sarnes and seconded by Mr. Demming to approve appointment of two deputy tax collectors. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Sarnes?
And the final is a motion to approve the student activity account request, letter A for the High School National Honor Society.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Sarnes, seconded by Mrs. Yarby to approve the student activity account listed. Comments or questions from board members? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Sarnes?
And the next Finance Committee meeting is also scheduled for December 16th, 2014.
Thank you. At this point, we'll go to the intermediate unit report from Mrs. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. On November 18th, the Bucks County IU Board met and toured the Tuonka School located within the Shamady School District. The IU uses this building for many programs, servicing students from zero through 21, which meet the needs of students which school districts cannot provide. Programs include early intervention, autistic support, emotional support, and traumatic brain injury. Of particular interest to me was a traumatic brain injury program called Brain Steps, which supports children with TBI from mild to severe. One of the programs, one part of the program, the itinerant arm of the program entitled BEST, provides support specific to students who have recently been discharged from medical or mental health facilities but still demonstrate difficulties in their current education setting. Specialists provide direct instruction while simultaneously supporting teaching staff. The next arm of the program is called the STAR Program, which provides guidance and support for short-term academic reentry. This classroom placement allows students, family, and academic teams to let go of the old normal of learning and adjust to the new normal of learning while the child recovers over TBI. The Life Skills Educational Attainment Program is the last arm that provides intensive support to students with TBI who are currently unable to function in their large-group academic environment. The goal is to return these students to a less restrictive setting. Dr. Tom Seidenberger, Circuit Rider for PA Schools, presented on the Campaign for Fair Funding. The coalition is comprised of over 40 organizations working to build public support to adopt a new state funding formula that is fair, sustainable, and predictable. I have more information. Dave, this sounds like you, if anyone is interested in joining the coalition or would just like to familiarize themselves with this movement. He was really pushing this and hoping to recruit some volunteers. In other news, in 2014-15, PDE expanded the Teacher Effectiveness System. To address this expansion, the IU organized numerous workshops in the spring, summer, and fall of 2014 to allow teachers in various subject areas to work countywide to develop model student learning objectives, otherwise known as SLOs. The models can be accessed on the BCIU website. In 2014-15, PDE is introducing a new rating system for non-teaching professionals, including counselors, nurses, psychologists, and supervisors. During the 2013-14 school year, all Bucks County School District and CTCs participated in the Bucks County IU's Principal Effectiveness Pilot Training, allowing them to become familiar with the Pennsylvania Framework for Leadership. Word action items included approval of agreements, purchases, policies, personnel items, the 2015-16 Comprehensive Plan for Submission to PDE, workshops, payment of bills, fund transfers, et cetera. Our next meeting is January 20th at the IU at the Doylestown location. Thank you, Dr. Yarnell.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. We will move to the Personnel Committee, and that would be Mr. Demming.
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. This committee met on November 12th, and there are four motions to be made tonight. The first motion is to approve the maintenance certification stipends as discussed in this meeting on 12th.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second, Dr. Yarnell.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mrs. Miller. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries...
Nay. Mrs. Yarby?
Sorry, I amend that. Motion carries eight one. Mr. Demming?
Thank you. The motion, the second motion is to approve the additional nutritional services building, merit awards, and the manager incentives, which were also discussed at this meeting.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mr. Thompson to approve the nutritional services awards. Comments or questions from board members? Not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Demming?
Third motion is to approve the revised job description for the security guard, for school's security guard, which, by the way, happens to be about six or seven pages, five or six pages, excuse me. So I'd like a second to that.
Move by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to approve the revised job description for the security guard. Comments or questions from board? Mrs. Miller?
I do, Dr. Yarnell. I do have concern that the security guards already on staff are not being CPI trained. I'd like that noted in the minutes, that I have a concern with that.
Mrs. Cronin, I assume you have that? Thank you. Any other comments or questions concerning the security guard job descriptions? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Demming?
The fourth motion is to approve the amended salary adjustments and/or the amended employment contracts for Dr. Rattigan, Mrs. Kathy Johnson, Dr. Bruce Bivard, and Dr. Robert Phillips.
Thank you. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mrs. Miller, to approve amended salary adjustments and/or amended employment contracts. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Demming?
Thank you. Our next Personnel Committee meeting is scheduled on the 14th of January.
Thank you. And would you continue with Policy Review Committee?
Certainly will. We have one motion, and that is to recommend the first reading of two policies, policy number 6.18 and policy number 9.15, both of which, for those that are interested, are posted on our website.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or questions reported? I'm sorry, a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Casper. Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mr. Casper, to approve the first reading of these two policies. Now, comments or questions? Mrs. Miller?
Yeah, I'm still, I thought policy 9.15 was kind of brought out of nowhere, and I know it's only the first reading. I did talk to Dr. Bovard and confirm it's the first reading, but I just feel I didn't get enough discussion, so I'd like those separated, so I can move. Is that okay?
Mr. Demming?
Sure.
Yes, it's okay, as long as the people who moved it, is that okay to separate A from B?
So we will go to policy number 6.18?
Yes.
For a second on that, and not those questions.
I need to ask Mr. Casper. Could we amend the motion, Mr. Casper, to include only A at this point? Okay? So now the motion reads, "To approve the Student Activity Funds Policy, number 6.18." Comments or questions on that particular motion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Now, Mr. Demming, with the second half?
We have another policy, a motion for policy number 9.15.
Do we have a second to this motion?
Second please.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mr. Thompson, to approve the first reading of the Booster Clubs and Parrot Organization Policy, number 9.15. Comments or questions from board members? Yes, Mrs. Yarby?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, we haven't discussed this. It was brought up at a board meeting, and it wasn't brought up at a committee, so, and I'm just wondering what the impact of the change is going to have on the Booster Clubs. I think it's something that needs to be addressed.
I have the same concern too, because I think we're putting financial burden possibly on some of the smaller groups. Not to say that the larger groups aren't impacted by it, but for some smaller groups, this may be a large burden. So I think we need more discussion on it, too.
So if this is the case, if three of our board members feel this way, would the board consider tabling this motion and bringing it back in the January meeting, which occurs after the Policy Review Committee meeting in mid-January?
I would feel more comfortable.
Would someone make that motion?
I'd move to table the motion.
And do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, this motion is tabled. Policy 9.15B will be discussed presumably at the next Policy Review Committee. Mr. Demming?
And the next Policy meeting is going to be, I don't think, February 14th or right here, but it's...
January 14th.
January 14th, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. I would make one note, Mr. Demming and Dr. Bovard, in browsing through the policies this weekend, or actually, I guess, yesterday, I discovered that we have a policy entitled Strategic Plan. We no longer have a strategic plan. The policy talks about the six-year version of the strategic plan with a three-year midpoint. I believe that needs to be revised to reflect what we're doing currently, which is a comprehensive plan that we've just submitted to the Department of Education. I forget the number, it's 200-something, it's at the beginning of that section. At this point, we'll move on to the Upper Bucks County Technical School Committee, and that would be Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. The Upper Bucks Technical School met on November 20th. The meeting minutes will be available online, so I'm just going to quickly make a few comments. Doing things a little different tonight in regard to the tech school. Construction is ongoing and is on-tend as of the last meeting. The weather, despite the weather, they've been able to make progress. Just a couple of comments. For myself personally, it's been a year now since I've had the opportunity to be on the board at the tech school, and I just want to say that it's really been a really great experience for myself, getting to learn more about the school up there, what the Upper Bucks County Technical School is all about and what it offers to our students. And I'd like to say, I'd hope that people would explore it. They have a new pastry chef in there. We have a new teacher for the culinary arts. There's a lot of changes going on. We've seen that. Take advantage of the school. It's a great gem within our community here up on Ridge Road. Their horticulture program, we've, some of the groups have used those for flowers. I know they offer through, they offer pet care, so I encourage people in the community to please look into the tech school. It's a great place up there. It's great opportunities for students that otherwise may not find their place, and that's what we see most of the time, are these students just blossoming out of that school. Coming out of there may have been with jobs or moving on to higher education, which they may not have done otherwise had it not been for that school. And the next meeting is scheduled for December 18th at 7:30 at the Upper Bucks Tech School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. I would add two things. One is, from the perspective of the horticultural folks, for those of you who would like a wreath, a grave, blanket, poinsettias, that sort of thing, they do sell that, the students sell that out of their store, not just flowers. My experience has been they've been beautiful and very cost-effective, so I would encourage the community to make use of that particular service from our students. The other thing is that the December 18th meeting, similar to here, is our reorganization meeting. At that point, someone from Penridge, presumably Mrs. Schmidt, if she'll take on that responsibility, will become vice chairperson for the Joint Operating Committee. That rotates among the three sending schools, along with the two other positions, the secretary position that Mrs. Schmidt currently holds, and the president. With that, we'll move on to the Technology Committee. That would be Mr. Thompson.
The next Technology Committee meeting is scheduled for December 3rd, tomorrow, 2014.
Thank you. Mr. Linden, I'd encourage you to come, so that you can hear what this gentleman, and there are, I believe, two significant issues on the agenda tomorrow.
I'll be here.
At this time, let's move to Act 48 Committee. That would be Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. The Act 48 Committee did not meet this month. Their next scheduled meeting is January 15th, 2015, at 4:00 PM.
Thank you. Ad hoc fundraising committee. Mrs. Schmidt, Mrs. Yarby, both?
The committee has not met since our last board meeting and is scheduled to meet on December 10th.
Thank you. Unfinished, or, I'm sorry, unfinished business from board members? If not, new business? I will say that I did send out earlier this week a request for committee choices from board members, so I look forward to getting those back from board members, and we will reorganize if necessary, or keep if that's the desire, the existing committees, or at least the existing membership in the committees. I believe we will keep the existing committees. Let's see. At this point, we've moved to the announcements phase. There was, or will be, a special board meeting scheduled for December 16th, 2014. That will presumably be the last full board meeting for the 2014 calendar year. That will follow the Finance and Facilities Committee meetings, and it will involve any business that comes before the board that needs to be approved, particularly from those committees. The next regularly scheduled school board meeting is slated for Monday, January 26th, 2015. It would be at 7:30 and will be in this room. There was, there were executive sessions held both on November 6th and November 12th, and they were for the purpose of personnel issues. There will be an executive session following tonight's meeting, also for the purpose of personnel issues. At this point, comments or questions from guests? Please, again, state your name and your municipality of residence.
I don't know whether the district is joining with or responding separately to feedback on the tests that have been controversial. Central Bucks School District, they were very upset at the type of questions that were on the tests for third graders. Samples are in the Intelligencer from this past Monday's paper, and I thought that the questions were way above the level of a third-grade students. And they're looking for feedback, and I think it would behoove our district, as well as all districts, to respond to that, because if you've read the sample questions from Monday's paper, they were really outlandish. So I'm hoping that our district will also respond with feedback.
I'm not aware that we've made plans to do that, but thank you for the suggestion. We certainly should take that under consideration. I'm always amazed at what our students can do, but we have seen in the past that the infinite wisdom of the Department of Education sometimes comes up with tests where scores literally across the state will dip. There was a fifth grade set some years ago, I can't tell you how many years ago, but where the numbers for all the fifth graders basically dropped inexplicably until you looked at the test and the test scores. One of the difficulties is those tests, when they are given to us, are very confidential and are sent back to the Department of Ed, so, you know, none of us have them in front of us. It's just the way the testing works. Obviously, they're trying to avoid fraud.
If you would look at Monday's intel, they have sample questions, you'll see what I mean.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else? If not, are there questions from the press? I omitted the press last time, I apologize. Anyone here? I don't even know if we have anyone from the press.
No questions.
Hi.
Yes?
I am from the press.
Do you have any questions? If so, please come to the podium.
I'll come over and introduce myself.
Hi, good evening. My name is Drew Freeman. I'm the new education reporter, the Lancel reporter. I've covered news for two years in Shellham, Abington, and Jenkin Town, and I recently switched beats. I did have a question regarding the security guard job description. I was just wondering what prompted that change and kind of the types of changes that are in that description, and if that's available online or anything like that.
The policies, once they're, I'm sorry, the job descriptions are discussed at the thing. I don't know if they're online. Mrs. Cron, can you tell me whether they exist online, job descriptions?
Can you use your microphone?
I don't believe they are. I believe what prompted some of the changes were some of the issues and incidents that have occurred, some of which I described before, related to the issue of internet and social media communications. We also had, very unfortunately, an attempted rape in the high school here some weeks ago. It was something that we honored some of our staff and students and faculty for, because of the quick response and the ability to thwart that issue, but it was obviously very unfortunate, and it was something that happened before school actually could beat. So there have been some things that change with time, and certainly, security is a huge issue for all school districts, as we know from what has happened around the country from time to time. So we're always trying to upgrade that particular set of description. As Mr. Demming said, it's a very long job description.
What were some, first of all, does this description apply to all of the security guards in the district?
We only have security guards at the high school, so it's a limited number of people. But yes, it does. Tonight it has been passed, and so now it will apply.
But only to the highest? Right.
I would think, I would think it would apply to all. We'll have to see.
And then, what types of changes were made in the description?
Mr. Demming, can you speak to that?
Good if I could hear her, but I can't.
She's asking what change, what types of changes have been made in the job description?
Oh, Moses. I'll tell you, if it's all right with you, I can show you, I think it is. It's all right with board?
Can you turn your mic on, please?
I brought it along, and I can show that for you.
Okay, great. I appreciate that.
Yes, can you meet with Mr. Demming right after the meeting?
I can, thank you. And then, just one more question. I'm not sure if we'll be willing to speak to this, but just the status of the teacher. I understand there's several negotiations going on in the district, and so I'm wondering if the board could speak to the status of the teacher negotiations.
Both of, both bargaining units are in negotiations with the school district, both the teachers' negotiations and support staff, and I can't tell you anything more than to say the parties with respect to both sets of negotiations continue to work in good faith and continue to negotiate, so they're ongoing.
And could you speak to some of the roadblocks and the negotiations, like the main?
No, ma'am. I don't decline respectfully to do that.
Okay.
Thank you. By the way, Mr. Cox is our solicitor, I don't know what the card says, but he is the solicitor for the school district.
Great, nice to meet you, Mr. Cox.
Nice to meet you, too.
Well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. At this point, we will, before we move to adjournment, I would like to thank, we have three scouts out in the audience, and I thank you for coming. I assume that this is associated with perhaps a badge, or perhaps even an Eagle Scout type of thing. Hopefully, we haven't disappointed you for a public meeting tonight, but I certainly appreciate your coming and staying and listening to what we had to say. At this point, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for coming.